Any need for executive session?
I have one brief matter involving the rec. department personnel.
Anybody else have anything? Any need to amend the agenda?
I don't have anything.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything on the meeting minutes of June 16th?
Oh, I have one thing. I don't believe the woman from Velco was Shayna Louisville. It's Shayna something else, but it's not Louisville.
I know, I kind of thought that. I don't know her well, but I wasn't sure.
I think that's who it was.
All right, maybe.
That's awfully close if it's not it. And if not, we can change it without leaving the new signature page.
Okay.
Also, not a big deal, but at the end of the orders section, there's a typo. Instead of this, it says his.
Okay. Uh, yes, last sentence. Got it. We can make both those changes if necessary for the first one, but we can still take the signatures if you'd like. And here they are, Joe.
Any questions on the orders?
I'll just point out that there's several orders, of course. There are the several that the select board was asked to sign for year-end orders, which were also in the select board original packet. And then there's tonight packet, which has fiscal year 2021 orders left over and the new fiscal year orders, and then several debit card purchases.
The debit cards, are those?
Those are all 22s. The debit cards are.
I see F five fifty truck spent $63,665. It bought a new body Ford?
That's the Viking Civis body that's coming on our new truck, which is basically ruddy from Kenworth, but they're putting the radio in as we speak, correct, Chad?
Yeah.
So that's not the Ford, that's for the Kenworth.
Right. So that'll be in a future order, the actual same trade, purchasing trade.
Kind of threw me off here, said F five fifty, and I kind of thought, well, it's a Ford.
Yeah, they might want to change that.
Tell me what you're looking at.
Second page.
Yep. That is right.
That's, I looked at that because we had to have one of them, and I said, geez, that's a little truck.
That's a lot of money for a little body truck.
So is it a three fifty, not a five fifty?
No, that's the Kenworth.
Yep.
Right.
What they're saying is a five fifty is actually a Kenworth.
Gotcha.
That makes sense.
That was picked out of the books and stuff, so, you know, that was a question on that.
Yep, thank you, Joe, for clarifying that.
You've got Black Bear Tree Land and Forest, 12,500 tree removal. Must have been a lot of trees.
A lot of big trees at the site of our auxiliary reservoir off of Plains Road. So the Water and Sewer Commission working with Sean Hendy went out and we got three bids, and that was by far the lowest one. It's for, I think, at least 17 very large diameter trees that were felt to be in danger of, if they did fall, to fall on those reservoirs and cause a lot of damage.
So are there any logs on those trees we're going to get?
No, these are softwood trees. These are hemlocks and pines, I think. So I don't know.
Well, they're still.
I would imagine that if there was any value in it, that was factored into their bids. Because we did get the low bids and they did just take care of removing the trees.
I appreciate the fact that it was put up for bid because
Of course, yeah, yeah.
Something that didn't involve that much is kind of nice.
Yeah, we had a high bid of about $40,000 from one of the contractors.
Yeah.
We felt good about Black Bear.
So I'm done.
And then the parking area covert, is that just not installed yet?
There's a rec. area covert purchase of about 1,500 bucks, was that right?
That's not covert, that's for the fabric paper.
Oh, it said covert on here.
That makes a little more sense.
What's the name of the supplier, just so I can make a note of that as well?
Ferguson's.
Yep.
Is that to do with the parking lot expansion?
It was, yes.
Have you started that or you didn't prepare for it?
Yeah. We just met with Omea today. They're going to give us about a foot's worth of tailings, which is almost impervious. On top of which, we will put some one and a half inch stone and then some three quarter minus to top it off. The thought being that if you did that, you probably wouldn't even need fabric. So maybe that's an area that we can either return it or use it for another purpose.
Yeah, I mean, I thought that as well, returning it, but I think on something for tonight, we might need it somewhere else.
So you did get fabric thinking you might use it.
Correct.
But you'll use it somewhere else for sure.
If, yeah, if not, we will.
But to have it on hand.
So is this another fiscal year-end thing, the Rutland County tax?
Yeah, as is VLCT's big dues payment when the New Year, and in the mosquito payment. All three came up as kind of obligations that were due as soon as our fiscal year began, and that's why they're in tonight's papers.
Okay, where is the county tax actually used for?
It's mostly judicial. That's pretty much their function, and that's why when we talked about the counties maybe getting first crack at all, some of that extra ARPA money, we all scratched our heads because unless they're going to gold plate all the buildings, it's hard to imagine how they could spend that kind of money. So we're hopeful that, again, that that will end up being redirected through the state back to the towns. But that's the only thing we get really from the county is the judicial service.
Okay.
Our contribution toward it.
Gotcha. Anybody have anything else?
So with that, I can pass these along. Two, three, four. At least four there, Joe. Yeah, I'll discuss those two things with Pat in terms of accuracy in the orders, but in her defense, it's just a busy, busy, busy time of year.
Oh, yeah, nuts in there this time of year.
Is that a ruddy one sticking out there? Is that another one that needs to be signed?
That is. Yeah, no, it is.
Maybe they.
I put it in my materials by mistake. So this is the FY 21 order.
See that tag there?
And I struggled because of the inaccuracy on the, or the mistake maybe on the covert designation. So I pulled that aside, and I shouldn't have. Thank you, Joe. Between you and Kelly, you keep me on my toes.
Don't comment.
All right, finally, we have payroll, which I can pass around.
Oh, it's thicker than hell.
That's right. We've got a lot of lifeguards on the payroll for this time of year. Lifeguards and camp counselors and all that.
Town managers are reporting.
Yes, thanks, Alicia. M L H Daniel's Construction began its work to repair the deck of the Kendall Hill Road, AKA Truck Route Bridge, on Wednesday, June 23rd. Last week, they finished jackhammering around two areas of rusted, exposed rebar in two areas of concern that we had on the bridge. And concrete was to be poured Friday with the long weekend and no Casella-related traffic ideally timed to let that cure and set up. Plug joint work was originally scheduled for this week and has been postponed due to the forecast for raining next couple of days. So they will be in with NICOM, the contractor, the subcontractor, to do that work, and then they'll be out of there. No surprises, so hopefully we'll see an invoice that reflects no surprises. As I mentioned before, there will be an Amtrak reopening ceremony at the Rutland Station on Monday, July 19th at 7:30. The roughly 90-minute event will involve a speech or two, perhaps even from legendary House Representative Butch Shaw, along with Mayor Gable there, preceding a free train trip to Castleton and a return trip via bus. Select Board Chair Alicia Malley and I have RSVP'd, but if anybody wants to join us, let me know. That's Tom Hooker.
Yep.
Thank you. I will get you on board, so to speak. Lynda Drummond, as you know, is taking the month of July off and will return to work on August 2nd on a part-time basis. Finally, or not finally, in addition, as I put in my memo, V-Trans appears to be willing to grant the town additional time in which to explore options on the bridge covert replacement project on Fire Hill. We have been talking about either rebidding the project and/or discussing and investigating the installation of our structure elsewhere in town. We did meet with the engineer and highway foreman, Alicia and I did, and looked at three other sites. On two of those other sites, this structure would clearly be oversized. On the third site, it might be roughly right-sized. We're talking the West Creek Road South culverts that need replacing. So we'll be investigating those options and keeping you posted. In any event, we have paid or plan to be paying for the structure that we've ordered, and as soon as, I think today I received the canceled check, I will send that off to V-Trans in the next day or two for our 90% reimbursement from our grants. The Florence Fire Substation project involved a site visit with the town manager, the highway foreman, the zoning officer, Chiefs Hempel and Hooker, and one of the Birmingham boys, I believe. And we talked about the lay of the land, where a structure might best be located and oriented. We talked about features that might be desired for the new building, and we hope to develop an idea of the rough cost for such a project and follow up with the select board for further discussions and for possible discussions of funding options. The sidewalk scoping study moves forward. The project engineers walked possible sidewalk sites. Some of that was attended by the town manager and the highway foreman on June 18th. There was a follow-up status conference held on Tuesday, June 29th, and that was pretty brief. And we discussed having a local concerns meeting toward the end of the August 18th select board meeting. So we're going to advertise that for, say, 7:30, and that'll be the ideal opportunity for people to express their views on where they think sidewalks would be a good idea in town or why they think some areas would not be good for sidewalk placement. And we will advertise that on all of our platforms to make sure we have as much input as we can generate. I'm sorry to report that our Zoom host, the unfortunately less-than-stellarly-tanned Elizabeth Surya, has notified the town that she will be unable to continue serving in that role beginning in August now that the library is kind of up to full speed. Town manager is investigating options, and I will follow up with one of those people I've talked about it with after tonight, and we hope to have a plan in place for future coverage. Of course, as you've seen, our friends at PEG TV have chosen tonight to reconnect with us after the 18-month pandemic shutdown of their coverage. And we'll certainly consult with PEG TV as well. Maybe there's ways that we can kill one, two, maybe three birds with one stone instead of having three separate stones. Pittsburgh Planning Day, the second planning, I'm sorry, Pittsburgh Day. The second planning session will be held tomorrow at 5:00 here in the conference room, at which we hope to kind of solidify some of the details of our event and decide what next steps to take to get prepared for it. According to V-Trans design consultant Carolyn Cota, Rick Conway has suggested having her update the town on the state's plans to replace the Mills Bridge or the bridge at the mobile station at the intersection of Route 7 and Route 3. I promised that I would ask you folks what sort of venue you would prefer. Would you like that discussion to take place during a select board meeting with, again, public availability in person and via Zoom? Perhaps instead at a planning commission meeting or some standalone session? Any thoughts?
How big a group do you estimate?
I have no idea.
Hard to tell.
I'm sure a lot of people are curious about all the disruptions that will come with the project.
Yeah.
It's going to be funny, I'm sure. If you have a big turnout, you wouldn't be able to do it here.
Right, but again, I don't know if we'll have a big turnout. That's the key. With Zoom, you can have hybrid with both people here in person and people watching from home. I mean, normally, we've had updates from V-Trans on projects like this during a select board meeting. I don't see why that would be a problem.
I would think that would be the way to do it. I mean, have the person come in on Zoom.
Yep, yep.
And.
Give us some drawings and some timeline and what kind of disruptions we would expect to see.
The drawings clearly will be easier to see there than they will anywhere else in this room.
True.
So I would suggest they come in on Zoom and we just announce it to people.
Yep.
Yep, sounds good to me.
That, you know, we've got room for, what, half a dozen people here, and the rest come in on Zoom.
Room on Zoom, yeah.
Of course, the press will cover it and that kind of thing. The good news is I'm told that they were planning on going out to bid this fall with a project to begin in the spring or summer, so I don't think there's any urgency to it. But maybe we can pick a date, say, in August or September for them to talk to us, if that sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Good, I will follow up, and I'll let the planning commission folks know about that so they can be involved in the discussion as well. That's all.
Did Rutland Regional ever send you anything about, kind of like, kind of like a guideline or idea of how to get the information out about the sidewalk?
They owe that material to me. They owe me flyers and they owe me kind of recommended language to generate interest. So I'll follow up.
Okay, yeah, because then I can put it on the Facebook page and.
I mentioned that to them at the June 29th meeting, yeah.
And the village farm has Tunes Days now, so that might be a place to show up with some flyers or. Anybody else have any questions for John? All right, any select board member remarks?
I guess the only thing I've got, because Truck Route, excuse me, Kendall Hill Bridge has been closed. I've been spending a lot of time going through Depot, and I see we have someone who seems to feel that it's okay to spray graffiti on our covered bridge. And that really pisses me off.
Mm-hmm.
So I suspect somewhere out there, somebody knows who did this. Maybe it would be nice if they told our town manager or our police chief. You know, it's one thing to, I mean, I don't like it sprayed anywhere, but you don't spray it on a wooden historic covered bridge. That's just beyond despicable.
I would beg a motion to put a reward out for any information regarding the catching of this culprit.
500 bucks?
No, 10,000 dollars. $500 reward, but probably spur some interest maybe. You never know.
I don't have anything against that. I mean, I, I mean, and I.
Let them know that we mean business, you know.
Well, yeah.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion.
We need a game camera out there.
Do we have any cameras that are movable and available that we?
I know that we have deployed motion cameras elsewhere. I don't know what we've got, but whatever we have, we can see about moving it.
Without getting into detail, how it'd be discussed in executive session, I think there's some ways that could be dealt with.
Okay.
It ought to be somewhere catching them.
If we think it's an ongoing thing rather than a one-off thing.
Right. Well, they did one side, and then a few days later, they've done the other side. And I mean, they've been doing the trestle on going up to Omea. They've sprayed the same things on that.
I did see that.
So it's obviously the same person.
It's local talent.
Well, one would assume.
I believe Chitlin got hit with that as well.
Really?
Yeah. So you've got a motion.
Oh, was there a second?
Yes, there was.
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
We'll see if Chitlin will join the club.
There you are.
Yeah.
Amplify the.
Maybe they'll move it up a thousand bucks.
That would spur some people to run their mouths.
Run their mouths, that's right.
Yeah, well, because, I mean, I, you know, it really pisses me off, anyway.
Any public comment? No?
Coach looks like he's in bed.
I did not say that, but.
I've got to, just because I'm me.
I thank you for that, Dave, but I'm comfortably ensconced on the couch.
Okay, well.
I'll just listen to this.
Undisclosed location.
I can hear more of my listening than I can of you.
It looks like a hospital room with that white wall and the pillow.
I'm good, I'm good. Thank you very much. Good to hear you all.
Okay. All right, then, Chad, we'll go into Highway Department fleet.
Yeah, you've seen Chad's, you know, describing generally what you'd like to talk about, right?
Yep.
Not me. Yeah, basically, our three fifty, which the water department just purchased theirs, is due, it's 10 years old this year. When I did the capital expenditure report, I was in my mind thinking, saving the town money. The truck's in good shape, running well. We pushed it off a few years. But recently, just nothing serious yet, but I'm thinking about it. I would like to keep it at that 10-year replacement before we do come into trouble and put more money into it than what it's worth.
We had thought about seven originally, and you've extended that, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think like the smaller truck, five fifty, those are, I think, worth it at eight years with those.
Okay, okay.
But yeah, this one's standing, and it's 98,000 miles on it. Like I said, body-wise, it's good. A little bit mechanical issues right now that we're getting by with. But again, I'd just like to bump it up since we're well, this year, well, next year's a greater, which I guess is worth, that's 400,000, probably not going to happen. And so I just leave there space there to replace that truck. For that one, and then I have another.
Is that the one that has the plume of smoke falling at wherever it goes?
Oh, boy.
But that's normal. That came like that.
It came like that, okay.
That was designed. That was the exhaust leak. Designed, but yeah, that's, yeah, considerable.
The school bus?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're ahead one truck, we have one extra, more truck now than we ever had, right?
Yes.
Has there any thought or any consideration been given to going back to the usual number we've had? Or do we want to stay with one extra truck ahead?
I like the one extra, having that spare. It came in handy last winter.
It did. Good thing we had it.
Yeah, I don't remember which truck it was, but we had an issue with one truck and.
It was loaded up for about two months, two months, wasn't it? It's kind of hours.
That was a year before.
Yeah, a year before.
Year before.
And that might have caused us to hold on to this truck.
It did, yeah.
Right, yeah. And honestly, like a lot of work we do this time of year, having that extra truck has come in handy. It's getting used a lot, so it's been worth having that. The other, I'll hit you all at once with it, but the spare truck that we did keep, the five fifty, that, well, was really due for replacement two years ago. Greg used it last winter doing his plow route instead of the tandem because he wanted to try it because of the, he's got an Oxbow Green Hill, the small dirt roads and hills. And so he wanted to try that. It actually worked out very well for him. He got around a lot better than he does with a tandem. So having the chain up and sliding down the hills. So since we have the truck, the body's getting real weak on it. So I guess kind of one option is to replace the body, which I have a quote from Sheriff Field, so it's $4,700. That's just for the body for us to get it, and we could replace it ourselves. Or other thought is having that go out to bid to replace completely. If Greg's going to use that as a regular roof truck, kind of be nice to upgrade that before, you know.
So we'd be down once again to one tandem?
We'd have two tandems, because we'd have the new tandem for his current truck five, which is 2,001, which really, and again, that one's going to do, because that was the one that was due last year.
Right, which you put a lot of money into it.
And we actually just went to Earl's a couple of months ago. They adjusted the pump, took it apart, adjusted the valves, so now it works even better. So no, and I don't want to get, I mean, I don't want to get rid of that one. For what are you using it for? It's great. But yeah, it's just, so it'd still give us kind of a spare tandem for the winter time if any other trucks go down. And just give us a solid second five fifty.
What kind of mileage on that truck?
Five fifty?
Yeah.
Isn't it today like 78,000?
So it's not many miles.
Not many miles. But again, it's getting, losing power. Yeah, I mean, it's doing the work and it's fine, it's running fine, but it's, I mean, I think it still has some value traded in lines if we went that route.
That's always the tough part, because you can drive it into the ground and get every last piece of work out of it, but then the trade-in is very limited. And the idea of a schedule was to take the guesswork out of it and do it kind of automatic so that you don't have to worry in the middle of the night, well. you don't have to worry in the middle of the night, well, how long, longer will it last for us?
Right.
But you've also got a brand-new Chevrolet that could easily take its place if it goes down.
What that's doing, my route, that's already on a route. I mean, yeah, I can pick up, which we've done as well, I mean, I, when the tandem was in the shop all for three months there, well, actually, that 550 did my route handle.
I was gonna say, we didn't have the Chevy when that was down.
No, no, we were down a truck and doing two routes with that one truck, and yeah, it can be, it can be done, it's, uh-
Now, if you were to put a new body on this, one that the body is bad on, would you, you looking at, that would extend the life of that truck for enough time to be worth doing that, that's-
Hopefully, I mean, if engine line is mechanically, runs well for a few years, then yeah.
I mean, that's a V diesel, correct?
Yeah.
So, I just, it's seventy-eight thousand miles, it's barely broken in.
No, but it works hard when it does work.
No, but that's even better for it than abiding all the time.
Well, yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, that's, that's why I bring it to you guys, that's, you know, with it being, continuing to be used as, on the plow route, it's just gonna get worse more, and those, that one's typically been eight-year replacement versus the ten years for the tandems and single axle. So, now we're on, well, it's a 2011.
Of course, for all these, we were, for all these we've been considering, if we had, you know, some more resources, we were considering shortening the lifespan of these trucks, so that better trade in.
Well, which we did when we ordered the Kenworth, but we switched-
Yeah, that's right. No, that's right. We did go across the board and say, ten years is now seven years, for example.
Right. Well, and I think it depends on whether it's big trucks or little trucks, whether it's, makes sense or not, too.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the big trucks, probably on a seven-year cycle, makes sense.
Yeah, 'cause it's more valuable.
Yeah.
So, you're looking for some guidance about which directions to go in on both of these trucks?
Yes, yeah, with the 550, if we're gonna get the new box and keep it running, 'cause it does, the boxes, let's had some repairs, piston's gone through the floor a couple of years ago, then re-welded back, the sides are getting rusted, uh-
Is it just scrap, or is there any trade-in value for the old box?
The old box would be scrap.
Yeah.
Scrap.
For the old box, but-
Forty-seven hundred doesn't sound like too much of a minus.
And that's just-
I don't think it's worth it, for the value.
Well, it is, and if, if we decide in a year, two years, three years to trade the truck, we just take that body off, put it on the new truck. Doesn't make the body's gotta go with the truck.
No, unless the new truck comes with a, go with a side dump versus a rear sander like this one is. But, that's just something to think about in a couple of years, so.
I mean, I guess my, I guess I'm not totally against, you know, getting the truck, but we've got this million-dollar culvert over in Florence, that we've got to figure out what we're doing with.
Right.
So, you know, is, is this the time, until we get that sorted out, is this the time to be, you know, putting highway money into more trucks? If, I mean, if we can spend forty-seven hundred dollars and keep this truck going for another two, three, four, however many years, without a lot of expense, I think we're better to do that until we get this culvert figured out.
You're gonna buy a new truck anyway, right?
As to the, as to the culvert?
They were talking about the taxi, so-
The taxi, right. You got the school bus taxi.
Yes, school bus taxi, yeah.
We call it a little classic.
Well, now, well, let me ask this then, you're buying that, how much more would it cost to upgrade that from a 350 to a 550, so you could throw a plow on that if you needed to?
Good question, actually, forgot my paperwork's, uh-
You know, I'm guessing it's-
There's not a big difference between a 350 and 550s.
Right, so that's, wouldn't it make more sense, if we're, if we're gonna get that truck new, to have it set up so that we can throw a plow on it, we don't have to have a brand-new plow for it, but we get it set up with a frame on it, so that that truck can be used, and then if this truck he's talking about goes down, we've still got that truck.
But it's a real base, that's not long, isn't it? Real base with that school bus?
With that 450. We wouldn't have to get the full four-door cab like we have.
Okay, you could get by with this.
We'd get by, actually, like, the, just the extended cab, like the current water truck.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't know if they've-
That would shorten the wheelbase a little bit.
Yeah, and I don't know if they've gotten rid of that.
I'm just saying, if you put a plow or something like that, a lot of the road is harder to use, too.
Well, it is, but on the other hand, it's not, we never put in a vehicle, it's not a full-time plow vehicle, we stopped with a plow on the 350 that we have, because we didn't need it.
Didn't need it.
You know, it wasn't. Right, but I'm just thinking, yeah, that's another option for us to think about.
Yes, if it happened to.
Yeah, 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 a little heavier truck for the owner, chipper and off that, yeah, no, I mean.
Might make sense to build a 550.
Sounds, sounds to me like it'd be a good idea to put a new body on, on that truck now to extend the life of it. It also sounds to me like you're having better luck on these hills with the smaller trucks instead of the big truck.
Definitely, yeah.
So, that puts more reliance on the smaller trucks, and kind of backs off on the pressure on the big truck.
Yeah.
Which is not a bad idea, I don't think.
Well, and it, in following along that line, what we may end up doing is, I mean, we keep the two tandems, but you got that single axle dump truck, when it comes time for that to go, it just goes, and we don't replace it. Because if you're using these smaller dump trucks to do a lot of the work-
You don't need that one.
We don't need that small truck.
No, I, I had thoughts on that as well, but you wouldn't like my thoughts.
Well, no, your thoughts, I was kind of expecting money, but I'm just-
My, my thought was, once that single axles due, that goes, replaced with a tandem, and we still keep old truck five, the 2011 Freightliner, that's still our backup truck, still, and we have the chloride tank in that for the summer, 'cause we're, right, we have the three big trucks, one truck has a chloride tank in it all summer, the majority of the summer long, so we're down, that's, so, I'm, you know, in favor of getting rid of the single axle, running two tandems to small trucks for our plow routes, and then we just keep that.
Other tandem is the spare.
The older tandem as our spare, and we have the tank in it, and if we're doing a whole and big job, we can empty the tank, take it out, and we got three tandems to haul, cows and whatever. That was my thought. Yes, I know it does spend money, but it's-
Well, but it's, well, no, we, this stuff law over the-
The trucks paid for, and then that just gives us, like I said, two tandems all the time available for work.
Not a bad idea.
No, I'm not against that, I just-
Yeah, do the-
So, the immediate steps we need are just to go out and bid, and the question is, are we bidding on a 350 or a 550?
On a 550.
'Cause we'll obviously bring that back to you folks to make your decision.
I, I mean, from my perspective, I think, and I don't know the cost between a 350 and a 550, but I know it's a lot, not a lot more, yeah, it's not a lot more money. So, I think the versatility of having the 550 with a plow frame on it, not talking buying a whole new plow set, I'm just talking frame it up, so that your plow that's on your 550 now can be put on it, I, to me, that is the way to go with that, if we replace that truck.
Yeah.
And then if we need, you know, if the box is that bad on that truck, we probably should replace that box.
Yeah, it's-
Because, I mean, you don't need the piston going through the floor and it coming down on somebody and rushing them, that's, you know, that's the-
And the forty-seven hundred as well within our range of making that decision ourselves anyway, so the board has given you some input on the 550, does that sound like a consensus for the 550? We'll go out to bid and then see what the numbers look like.
And replace the body on the other one.
Yeah. I would say quit while you're a head child, but you're still-
I know.
Goodbye, folks.
You want me to keep going?
Yes, please.
I get a break. Uh, West Creek, yes, from, we left off to Proctor Line, it was worse last winter than it was two winters ago, I don't think it's gonna-
It's not gonna be, no.
No, it's pretty bad.
It's rough.
Yeah, I got the quote from a company called Garrity that does reclaiming, so their cost to come in and grind that road down is about lower than eleven thousand dollars.
Now, that you say reclaiming, is that grinding and taking it up, or just leaving?
Grinding and leaving it.
Just grind it, okay, yeah. Well, when you say reclaim, it's, I think of actual reclaim.
That's their, their call.
Which doesn't make any sense, because you definitely got to build that road up.
We're talking what, a mill and fill, is that what they call it?
Yeah.
Add into what they leave.
Well, grind, grinding the existing asphalt down, um, yeah, and then just shaping it, put some paper down, and building right up over that, puts a decent gravel.
And that takes you to that paper discussion we had, that we might be able to use the fabric paper there.
Right, that's where, yeah.
Yeah.
Buying that in advance while it's cheaper.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you consider checking the culverts and changing them at this point, if they need it?
They're all done.
They're all done. Except the one big one.
Except, yeah, except for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's been done the last three, four years.
Settle in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, old calling.
Yeah.
That's right.
But, yeah, so, I mean, I, between the grinding, um, and paper gravel, costs about fifty thousand dollars, just for us to do the work, to get it ground, build up to six inches of gravel, just for now, I mean, it didn't really, I don't know what the final height would be, but at least that would give us a good base, grade it, nice gravel road to get rid of.
You better get it right by this.
Better off than the way it is now.
Well, yeah.
And you're saying that, having done that work, if and when we see our next Class Two paving grant, it wouldn't take, we wouldn't have to destroy all this work, we'd just build on top of it.
Yeah, just build up more and pave.
Yeah.
Don't think I do something with that road, 'cause it's, I was on that last week, and it's terrible.
Well, it's both, the fields are here and the road's down here, I mean, it's bad.
Yeah, if you drive in the middle, it's asphalt.
It's still bad.
Well, yeah, but they frown on you, strutting the yellow line.
Yeah.
The only drawback on that would, would be that big culvert down by the, might possibly put this cement one in.
Yeah, right, but at least, I mean, that would-
And that way into the road.
Wouldn't have to put as much material there, or whatever, and, you know, even skip the paper part, so we're not ripping up the paper when that, when that becomes to be replaced.
Have you had any thoughts on how to find the money in the budget? I mean, for example, we're looking at, and it's not, it's, nothing's final until we hear it from Chad, the auditor, but the general fund did very well this year, and might have a substantial surplus if the Select Board wanted to direct any portion of that core in a project like this, which is unbudgeted.
That would be the place to do it, is that road right there.
Yeah.
Definitely.
All the roads in town.
That's the worst land we've got.
Section. Oh, yeah.
It suffers from the fact that we already improved the rest of the road so much.
Yep.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, even that, it's, yeah, it would be better off dirt.
Better, exactly.
But that section, yeah, over the years, yeah.
Even if you run back to the, of the, with the tire and stuff, that they're gonna do-
Oh, chip sealing.
We'll see how Oxbow performs.
Could you even do that temporarily, for, extend that for a few years?
Extend it for a few years, yeah.
There you could.
That's a thought, yeah.
We're probably not good for-
Something used to be used around.
For that, for another grant.
Yeah, yeah.
We got one a couple of years, two, three years ago. Go ahead, what did your, what do you think about the financing of it?
Oh, well, I just tried to see what, like everything, guardrail budget, we usually, I mean, unless trucks are hitting them, we haven't been replacing too many, so luckily we've gotten reimbursed for those ones that have been hit, so. Uh, the winter sand, we ended up with a surplus on that this year, or twenty-one, and I think with our new shed, I feel we're probably gonna have more than enough button in the budget for this year as well, depending on any major ice storms, but, I mean, there's a few in that, and a little bit from the gravel budget, you know, I kind of figured out, I could probably, you know, get like half of it, twenty-five thousand, from my budget, transfer to that, and kindness in your heart, cover the rest.
Then we don't know what we're gonna get from the state either, and-
Um, we do know what we're gonna get from the state, but we do have strings attached on ARPA as to whether this is storm water management, and it's hard to make that argument.
I don't know.
That could, that's right down by that, yeah.
That could be the top of that road. So, it's not washing the stuff off the road, I don't know, that's water quality to me.
Well, let's try to imagine, we're running by the region, they might say-
That would be nice if that worked.
But you've got no comment, I believe.
Regional planning commissioner has helped and guidance on how, whether these things are eligible for that program.
Yeah.
But if not, like I said, there's a large surplus we're looking at on general fund.
Yeah, I would say, we got other places, I'm sure we'd be able to do that.
These are the places anyway.
If you all, if you all agree that it's a worthy project, we can-
Yeah, let's figure out, let's figure out.
Well, I think it's, it's worthy, and the other part of it is that culvert, and I guess that's some numbers, I mean, we, we now own the culvert.
We do.
So, we need to find a place for it.
But the key, I think the key there, Dave, is, this program has always been a ninety percent state grant, and I'd be very reluctant to move forward with a project like that, with the town ponying up a lot more than simply ten percent of the project. I know that's concerning you, but I think that, for example, this West Creek Road location, if we wanted to invest a little bit of effort into soils analysis, to see if that would, structure would be going there, that would be a lot easier to install within a smaller budget, smaller degree of difficulty. The other alternative is either to put a much bigger culvert than needed on these other two sites, that way at least ninety percent of the cost is covered, 'cause it's an easy install, and those other two sites are easier. Another option is to see if camp or our engineer has anybody else who's looking for a structure like that, we could sell it to them. But I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be advocating anything that had us paying a lot more to get that project done than our, your normal ten percent. You seem to be worried that we're gonna spend eight hundred thousand dollars-
No, 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 you're missing, you're missing my whole, now I know why I'm confused, you're missing my whole point.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, this West Creek Road project, if that culvert, if we're allowed to put that in there, and we had an idea how much it was gonna cost to put it in, do everything we're gonna do, if we could do that all at once, build it back up, do everything we're gonna do, and just have it done, so in a year, two years, whenever we get the money to pave it, it's done.
Well, that might-
Rather than having to tear it back up again and, and put whatever we're gonna put for a culvert in there and whatever, it would be nice to have the figures to just do it all at once and have it done.
Well, I, there's less of a risk of that if you're just putting stone down and compacting it and not paving it for a year or two, waiting on the grant to do the paving and to finish up after we do a cover installation there. I know, I know you don't want to wait two years until we get a grant to reconstruct that whole section, because it's not needed, it doesn't sound like a reconstruction of that road. You think it's, you think it's a matter of building up the base?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's-
Yeah, it's-
Below the edges are all. Build it everywhere.
The edges are all tied.
And grade it.
So, I mean, if you would like to do this all in one comprehensive approach, we could certainly lean on getting this site evaluated for the structure.
That's what I, that's what I'm, that's what I, obviously, I wasn't saying it clear enough.
I might not be hearing it right, so my mistake.
That's what I thought you were doing.
Okay, all right, that was fairly clear, but I don't think like a lawyer either, so-
I don't, I'm sorry. I'll ask, I'll ask to get this opinion about whether this culvert is appropriate for that site.
Appropriate for that site, yeah, 'cause I suspect-
There might be a little bit of investigation in soil analysis.
Of course there is. But now, and I didn't hear you say, are we allowed to leave that culvert where it is for a little while?
Well, we have asked that they hold on to- Well, we have asked that they hold on to it, and I believe, and our engineer believes they owe us that favor. They haven't said that they will do that favor for us.
Well, that's why I'm thinking, you know...
He hasn't said no.
That's, that's okay, but he hasn't said yes either.
And we just sent him a check, because I asked him to say, I said, "Look, we wanna do the right thing here, you've built it, we ordered it, here's your check, please hold on to it," and he hasn't said no. That, that's the state of play now.
Okay.
And if he hopes to ever do business with Pittsford, one would hope that they would do that favor.
Well, yeah, but we also can't expect him to hold on to it for years.
I know, it's pretty, uh, big thing to pick around.
You know, it's, you know, something less than a year, yes, but I don't feel right asking him to hang on to it for too long.
And I don't know...
And we don't want it sitting around somewhere either.
I agree. But at the same, by the same token, I have no idea what his space limitations are and that kind of...
Well, no, yeah.
Oh, worse, anywhere you find space down the dump.
Get it here in town and just store it ourselves?
We could, but that's, that's one hat's one political headache I would rather not deal with, with people kicking those tires for the next 365 days, saying, what are we gonna do with this white elephant?
Well, and you go, you're gonna have to bring in a crane...
There's a separate cost.
To unload it and whatever, you only wanna do that once.
Or rather than take a chance on losing it. It's paid for.
It's paid for.
So it's ours.
We ordered it. And I'd just as soon leave it there for as long as I can.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, yes, and I'd just as soon only move it once.
Exactly.
But again, that's why I think we need to look into, is this site...
Yeah.
...appropriate for it? If it is, let's get it in there.
Hopefully, to...
Figure out...
Butch, did you have something to say?
I do. Yeah, I do. I, I hate to, because I thought I was just gonna listen, but I can't help myself.
It's okay.
I think, I think John's, uh, thought process is, is, is good here. I think maybe with the soils, uh, engineering study on the soils, you may be able to ask AOT to continue to give you the grant for a different location, if that particular precast structure would fit for, for your use on the West Creek Road. You still have considerable amount of money available to you, but it's available for the crossing on Fire Hill, and I don't know, I guess the question for John is, is, is that, have you discussed that with AOT to have that grant transferable to a different location?
Yes, Brian has said that would not be a problem to change the scope by relocating it.
Right, and that probably will be, or that soils analysis group...
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
In fact, in fact, we had submitted, along with our highway application, which was denied, we also supply, uh, submitted a structures grant, um, application, which was also denied, but that grant asked for the money to do the soils analysis at the West Creek Road site and to purchase a culvert for that site, so...
And that was, that was, that was denied also?
That was denied, which is unusual. Usually we've gotten all the structures grants we've asked for, so...
Might give you something to do tomorrow.
Yeah.
The other issue, you talked earlier about trying to wiggle, uh, water quality into this particular project, I would caution you on doing that, because the ARPA funding that is now available to you is, is very direct, but I also wanna remind you, there's about a trillion-dollar proposal in Washington that will be voted on when the Congress returns from their break, and hopefully that will get passed, so...
Infrastructure.
The last, the infrastructure grant, the infrastructure, the last ARPA funding had no transportation money in it, so this is what we as a state are looking forward to, is the, this new bill at about a trillion bucks, uh, to, to help us through this, and within that, then, then, I'm sure there'll be funding for towns, uh, we won't be able, the state will not be able to spend, I don't think they'll be able to spend all the money that we should receive on that, because we're a, we're a, what we call a minimum state, so we get money based on our size and not our population, so the minimums are, are very generous in the bill. So we'll see.
We'll go play that when they get all done.
Yeah, so instead of trying to make, in this case, trying to make a, we'll take this for a whole...
Yeah, wait.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
So it sounds like we'll figure out the money, but yes, you should plan on doing that project.
It's the old Garrity reclaiming.
Grind it up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever it is, yeah.
Yep, we just need to get what we need in twice.
Yeah.
There's, there's road anyways, often that's...
Often, right, yeah.
Good.
All right.
And we'll see, we'll see how, how quickly we can get the soils analysis for that particular site for our culvert, to see if we can wrap it up together, because that would be optimal for sure.
Oh, no, yeah, it, you know...
All right, thanks, Chad. Um, so, update on ARPA, was there anything new that has...
I know, I was going to tell you that Pat and I did go into the state's portal, and we did ask for the money, and it, the first batch should be coming to us in this next week or two, I would imagine, um, and of course, as you know, as you recall, we do have some time in which to figure out how to spend it. So at least the important stuff has been done. We've said yes, we want the money, and we've given them all of our contact info and banking information as required.
All right, awesome.
It's hard to imagine who will say no to that, but I guess if you don't decide by January, July 15th, you're out of luck.
Yeah, huh. Um, and then, yeah, so, we just have to set fiscal year '21, '22 tax rates?
Um, yes, um, I thought Helen would be carrying in, is she there? No, she's not. Okay, um, you have in your packet, um...
Is she calling her?
No, well, you can if you like. She knew that the meeting would be relatively short, so if we can get her, even better. If not, I was just gonna say, because you've had a slight increase in the grant list and level funding, and only a modest school board increase, the tax rates compared to last year are virtually the same. Um, you're talking about, you know, very small increase for both the homestead and non-homestead, generally as the result of the school spending side of things.
That's good.
They go down if you only look at the town fund, town spending.
Right.
Having Kelly walk us through it, I don't know that it's 100% necessary.
No, this is all pretty self-explanatory in here.
Um, so you have before you a schedule of rates, which we could certainly incorporate into the minutes by, I guess, me emailing that packet to you, as we've done in the past, so I think if you're agreeable to basically raising the money that we've agreed at town meeting we need to raise, plus school spending, uh, somebody can make a motion to adopt the rates as presented.
Second it...
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll give that to you tonight. For tomorrow, yeah. Butch, wanted to say something?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Because we don't have the documents in front of us, can you use batteries, please?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
All right, so you want the municipal, and then...
Municipal and a...
Then with the village, oh, so municipal tax rate, oh, man, hold on, I got bad ideas. Point 6338, uh, with village is point 6688. Homestead tax rate is 1.4428, and non-homestead is 1.7024.
I could email this to you, Butch, I could email it to you if you'd like.
That, that would be wonderful, John, I certainly would appreciate that.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Um, if there's nothing else, then I guess we'll adjourn.
Great.[1780.12]